Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of, somebody help me out on the date, April 23rd, 2019. Before we begin, this, I just want to say that this is one of my favorite meetings of the year because we celebrate the careers of people that have made a tremendous impact on our students. And one of those people created a little student of her own through proxy, and he would like to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Go ahead. Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Did not see this a beat.
Don't you just love a board meeting? I think we're gonna make that a permanent thing. Have a student lead us. I think that's actually a very good idea. We may have a monthly student lead the pledge. You did a much better job than I usually do. You're very... Can I just go home and have a cup of tea with him and leave the rest of you to have this meeting? Nice job. So we are moving right into the fun part of the meeting, which is the recognition of retirees. And as you can see from the number of people in this room, there's a number of them this evening.
First, I just want to say myself that this is a very, very special evening where we honor those who have given so much to the school district over many years, who've made a difference here for our students, for their colleagues, and have really built this amazing community for the community. Because the school district is of the community, and it is also for the community. And it means a great deal to have all of you here this evening. As I go through each of the, those who are retiring, some notes on each of the, of those who are leaving, I'm going to ask the supervisor, their supervisor, to come up and join me. Each of our supervisors, our administrators, have written something that I will read, but I'd like them to join us here as well up on the podium so that we can gather together in honor of our retirees. So let's, we're going to start with our bus drivers, so I'll ask Michael Koenig to come up and join me. So Michael has written his comments and statements to honor the drivers. We start, and as soon as I call the name, please come up so you can be here too. We start with Sandy Burstall. Sandy? Here's what Mike had to say about Sandy. "When I was a driver, I drove a great program of students, the New Horizons Program. And when I moved into the office, I couldn't think of a better person to take over that run. Sandy's gentle tone and love for children was just as needed for the students. She will be so hard to replace. I know the children and parents will sure miss her. And Sandy has been here loyally and faithfully working with us students for 26 years." Let's congratulate her. And here is what Mike had to say. "Ray is one of those employees that comes to work every single day and gets along with his coworkers. His students and parents love him, so sometimes you forget that he even works here. Just a low-key guy, but jumps out of the shadows to offer in hand when anyone is in need. We will all miss him. Ray, 26 years." And I must say, Mike has a wonderful turn of phrase. You've done really well with the statements about your fellow, fellows in that bus garage, Mike. Really wonderful. Next, we have Chrissy Medina, who has been here for 30 years. Chrissy has had one of the most challenging runs in the school district because the students on her bus have special needs that require monitoring and attention and care. And these are the students who require her patience and her understanding, which she has given all of the years. Her love for the kids could be seen if you ever rode the bus, and seeing the smiles from even the severely handicapped kids when she could ask, she would ask them about their day. This caring would go on after hours, too. She would call parents to see how the kids were doing when they were out sick. They will all miss her, but I know that she brings a lot of continuing friendships into retirement. This is a person who goes above and beyond." Next, we have someone who isn't here, but who has been really at the bottom of everything. Without him, our buses wouldn't get out on the road, and that is Ray Stillson. He's not here, but he is someone we thank. He's been here for 31 years. He's been our mechanic. Ray is a great guy. We all joke about his bark, but over the years, I've seen that it's all show. He's a very caring guy that would drop anything to help anyone out, day or night, but most likely barking all the way. His work ethic is obvious by his maintenance record and doing this with only one mechanic, himself, for over 30 years. We won't tell him, but we're going to really, really miss him. Thank you so much, Mike. These were wonderful.
And Fran, before you move on to the next category, school starts at the curb of the bus stop. It does not start when they walk in the door. And it's the same rambunctious children that teachers have with all of the infrastructure, but one person is usually in charge of all those children with their backs to them while trying to maintain safe driving. And the fact that that's where the students get the tone of the day. The minute they see their bus driver and the smile and the welcome and how are things, and it can make or break a student's day. And I've heard, I know all these names, their neighbors, they will be absolutely missed because that's what we really need. We need our children to want to come to school before they walk in the door. So thank you very, very much.
Next, we have the high school, and if Dr. Intriari and Mr. O'Connor could come up. And we have only one retiree from the high school. And she has been the life and energy of the guidance suite where many of our students go to get help, support, guidance, and just all kinds of good, positive feelings from our secretary in the guidance suite, our own Carolyn Heller. So...
Wait a second.
Yeah. No, there's more.
Oh, yes, you have more.
Say a few more things. Yes. So Carolyn shows caring for the students and the counselors. We know that. Always. There's always a smile when you go into the guidance suite. And the students know that they can get help, they can get what they need when they go there. There's a willingness to find new and more efficient ways of completing tasks. That's big. Carolyn is a learner, and she likes learning, and she likes to teach. She's willing to learn new technologies. She's a power school pro. And most important, she's part of the fabric of the district. She operates always with fairness in mind. And, you know, everyone knows that she is Putnam Valley through and through, loyal through and through, and ready to help, ready to assist at all times. Carolyn. Thank you so much. Next, we have, from the elementary school, so Ms. Podesta, and Ms. Rata. So Anne Marie Barry. So Anne Marie. How many years, Anne Marie?
Seventeen.
Seventeen years. And we want to congratulate you on your retirement. Ms. Barry has worked hard to supervise the elementary children very closely during recess and lunch, and she will be missed by her colleagues and supervisors. Mrs. Barry always enjoyed playing games with the children at recess and making sure that they are safe and happy each and every day. We wish her a long and happy retirement and lots of sunny days. They were out today. Outdoor recess. And now we have the middle school, and Mr. McCarty and Dr. Mahika. Our first retiree couldn't make it this evening because of an illness in the family, and that is Joanne Burns. And Joanne, and Mr. McCarty has written these notes for each of the teachers and staff in his school. Joanne has a caring and compassionate approach with all the students that she has taught over her 36-year career. She has a passion for reading and ELA and can often be found enunciating words so that all students have a better understanding of the English language. Joanne started her career at the elementary school here, from 1983 to 1989, spending six years teaching kindergarten. Then 89 to 92, three years in special education, K-1. Took four years off to have twin boys in 92. She came back from 96 to 98 and spent two years in the fourth grade while coming to the middle school from 98 to 2009, spending 11 years teaching sixth grade, 2019, teaching sixth grade. She finished her career after spending nine years teaching fifth grade. Joanne has also been an integral part in being an advisor for student government and an advisor for the Homework Booster Lab. More importantly, she is always there for every child and worked alongside Jerry Carlin for numerous years in being flexible with any new ideas of changes he brought her way. They made an invaluable team that many students benefited from in bringing a PBIS reward system and CB dollars that students strive to work toward. Congratulations to Ms. Burns. Hopefully she's watching.
I was trying to say something.
Absolutely.
She was my son's kindergarten teacher.
That's wonderful. I'm going to, I think I'll wait to see if Jerry Carlin makes it because he said he had a game. So it could be that he hasn't returned yet, but we'll go on and then come back if he couldn't make it. Marie Gabary. Marie, come up. Marie has a heart of gold. She is a familiar face for all children that enter the main office. She cares for children in a way that goes beyond the school day and has even brought lunch for students and offered her time to help them get work completed. She has volunteered in the district for many years prior to employment. Marie has been employed for 25 years in the district with two years as a teacher aide and 23 years as an office assistant to the principals, to principals Marge Holderman, Ed Halasy, and Travis McCarty. As stated previously, she has mentored many students through the years, and her greatest joy is enjoying watching the students have fun at school events such as Moving Up Dance, Washington DC trips up to 2001, Boston trip one year, and volunteered to chaperone many concerts and school dances. She has helped keep the school running when we have the need for many vacancies through preparing and calling substitute teachers. Marie puts the needs and well-being of the students and staff first. Congratulations. I know this from daily contact. Marie is a warm and welcoming presence at all times in the school. Next...
Cookies for you.
Next, we have Fanny Mondelli. Fanny?
Fanny is the type of person that every student should have the privilege of working with. She brings a smile to any type of classroom environment and takes time out of her day to ask everyone how they're doing. She goes out of her way to assist all teachers and students. Fanny has worked as a TA at the middle school over the course of her 21-year career since September of 98. She's had the joy of working side by side with amazing and dedicated teachers in the fifth-grade collaborative setting as well as in New Horizons. She remembers all the activities, trips, and camaraderie, including fifth-grade trips to Ellis Island and the Statue of Liberty, Lake Compounds with eighth graders, involvement in terrific variety shows, and memorable Thanksgiving feasts in New Horizons, to name a few. Daily, she has enjoyed being there for the children and supporting the wonderful teachers she has worked with. She also wanted to extend her heartfelt gratitude to the middle school family for seeing her through some difficult life changes. Loving and caring friends have surrounded her on more than one occasion. She states that it has been an honor to belong to a wonderful group of people who rally when one of their own is facing hardship and share in each other's joys. Lifelong friends have been made. Thanks for the memories, and thank you.
Next, we have Conchetta Nida. Conchetta is a caring mathematician at heart who has worked with some of the most diverse students at Putnam Valley Middle School. She has assisted in many math classes due to her expertise and passion with the subject and is always a deep thinker. She has collaborated with many different teachers over the years and have, all have appreciated her approach to learning. Conchetta was hired in 1998 and has offered 21 years of service to the middle school. She worked as a teacher aide until 2017 and then became a Level One Teaching Assistant on January 23rd, 2017, and a Level Three Teaching Assistant a year later. She has worked at every grade level and every subject but has a passion for math, as stated previously. More often than not, she has worked in collaborative and achieved classes. Conchetta has chaperoned events and volunteered much of her time for the community. She's been the lead seamstress in the drama productions since Jean-Marie Crane arrived at the middle school. In addition, she's been the art club and mural club advisor for the past three years. Conchetta states that over the past 21 years with the district, "The Putnam Valley family has helped me through many good times and several very difficult times. For that, I'm eternally grateful." An incredibly talented woman who has helped us tremendously and helped our students. Rosie is supportive and giving in her roles and time through Putnam Valley Middle School. She can often be found with Fanny Mondelli at her side, and the two are the foundation of our program with a wonderful sense of humor. Rosie always has a smile on her face, is very witty, and has a firm approach with students who have diverse needs. Rosie started working as a TA September 1999. She worked with wonderful teachers in a collaborative setting and the New Horizons Program. She has made lifelong friends and has many great memories. Rosie has enjoyed being in the variety show and class trips, but most of all, it was being with children. Rosie has been involved in Cooking Up a Storm with our New Horizon children for Thanksgiving. She wants to thank you all for the wonderful moments at Putnam Valley Middle School. Mercedes Perez.
Mercy has been one of the most dedicated lunch and recess monitors. She has one of the most challenging positions in the district and connects with children in ways that help them be comfortable during a very unstructured time. She works closely with children, teachers, and administration in being transparent regarding her position. We will all miss her camaraderie and smile as she moves into the next stage of her journey. Mercy started working for Aramark in 1990 in the middle school kitchen as a food server for five years, and then began working for the school district as a lunch monitor from 1995 till the present time, in total 29 years. Mercy states, "My children attended PV Middle School, my son Justin, and my daughter Roxanne. I got to see both my children and their friends grow up alongside my coworkers' children, who are all young adults now. I've also seen the children of my children's best friends come and go, three generations of children. It has always been a pleasure to see how many of the students have grown and where their lives have taken them. I've also made friends with numerous coworkers throughout the years, from the kitchen, lunch monitor, bus drivers, faculty principals, assistant principals, and so on. Example, Jerry Carlin. My daughter was in elementary school when she first, when he first started. She remembers him running in the school races. One of my greatest memories is working with Kathy Bartolini. I miss her dearly every day."
Thank you so much, Ms. Perez. You can see that the school is a family and how interconnected it is to the community. Cynthia Pleasure. We waited for you. Cynthia has shared her passion in knitting with the students of Putnam Valley Middle School by starting a knitting club. She has assisted various teachers and students throughout her time, including co-advising the newspaper club with Lynn Sharp. Cynthia has been a teacher aide for 13 years, from September 1st, 2004, to January 22nd, 2017. She then worked toward her Teaching Assistant Level One, January 23rd, 2017, to January 22nd, 2018, and Teaching Assistant Level Three, January 23rd, 2018, to present. She has fulfilled various assignments throughout her time at Putnam Valley Middle School that include collaborative, self-contained life skills and resource classes. She has participated in numerous middle school activities, including variety shows, campus cleanup, band concerts, chorus concerts, Hollywood, Halloween bash, spring fling, raid dance, and year-end school trips. Additionally, as mentioned previously, she has advised the middle school Tiger Times and Newspaper Club Advisor from 2014 to 19, and established the middle school knitting club. She also supported the Putnam Valley High School 2000 to 2019 varsity sports programs as a chaperone and has served as an August Regents Proctor for Putnam Valley High School from 2000 to 2018. Next, we have Flora Racinelli. Flora?
Flora has such an easygoing and relaxed personality that children of Putnam Valley Middle School adore. She has taught children to work hard through expression and that art is in the eye of the beholder based on various perspectives. All children feel safe to try various media in her classes, and she has advanced her own craft this year in learning how to use an interactive TV. Flora is a lifelong learner, and that has been shared with her students as well. Flora started teaching art in 1994 and was fortunate to teach the subject she loved. She has been in the Putnam Valley School District for 25 years. She ran the Art and Mural Club for more than 20 years. For the past 23 years, she has collaborated with other teachers and students in running the Art, Music, and Technology Show, which showcased artwork from every student in the school, allowing all students to shine. Over the years, she has showcased students' artwork at different venues in and around the community. Flora has mentioned being proud that she has made a difference in students' lives. It's great when former students come back to see her and they decide to go in the teaching field because of her. Flora states, "I have made my lifelong friends working in the school district, and working here has been a big part of my life. I am blessed with a wonderful supportive family, three beautiful grandchildren, another on the way. I'm looking forward to sleeping late, playing with my grandchildren, and traveling with my wonderful husband." Congratulations.
Lynn has been an integral part of our very successful Mandarin-Chinese program. I know, I've been in that classroom many times and seen the wonderful work that Lynn does, interacting with the teacher during that Bosie's program, so there's a great feeling that the kids have that they have a teacher in the classroom. She has supported teachers through the asynchronous program and provided needed assistance for our students. Lynn started at Putnam Valley Middle School in 2000 as fulfilled various roles, including subbing for 19 years. She has been yearbook club advisor and received the Pride of Putnam Valley Award with Dorothy Nadell. She has been a co-advisor for our newspaper club, scenery club advisor, art club advisor, assisted Flora Racinelli in the annual Art, Music, and Technology Show setup. Lynn has chaperoned events such as band and chorus concerts, drama productions, and dances. She has worked in classrooms with many teachers over the years, and I feel like I've developed a relationship with Lynn with the Mandarin, and I am so delighted to see you here, but sad that you won't be here. Help us, students. Now we can go back to Jerry Carlin. Jerry? Jerry Carlin is considered an enthusiastic performer who is on stage every day. He brings learning to life through hands-on activities, waffle breakfasts, CB money auctions, and fish dissections. Jerry is someone who inspired me, and that is Mr. McCarty, who wrote for each of the teachers and assistants, to be flexible. He taught me to be flexible. Hear it. And see the world, and teaching in a different lens. He taught me to care for the child and not the factual information that they should learn, but that students will remember how you treated them, not what you taught them. Jerry has been with the district for 32 years and started his career in 1987, 88 as a permanent sub at Putnam Valley Middle School. He did that for three years before being hired in an N6 tenure position as sixth-grade social studies, reading, and math teacher in 1990. He then moved to the elementary school, taught fourth grade for four years. After that, he moved back to the middle school as a fifth-grade math, science, and ELA teacher. He has taught fifth and sixth grade from that time on. In addition, Jerry was a PVFT Executive Board member for 24 years and PVFT president for 14 years. Co-curricular activities include the creation of the Go Green Club, 47 seasons of coaching modified varsity sports at Putnam Valley, and three years of football at Yorktown. Jerry has coached baseball, lacrosse, soccer, wrestling, volleyball, and basketball. He has developed summer sports camp programs for Putnam Valley. An ultimate performer, he has emceed the Putnam Valley Music Association Variety Show for 14 years, the Mr. Valley event, the PVF auction, among many others. We would be remiss if we did not mention the magical show, Snow Tie, with its 77-to-1 record, which has become iconic. It has taken on a life of its own. Now hangs, by the way, in the entranceway because of the auction that... Now hangs, by the way, in the entranceway because of the auction that it was actually won by Mr. Olivario. So see how everything is interconnected. I mentioned that when I started. It has taken on a life of its own and has given so many people so much enjoyment with its prognostications, except for the person who had to call the snow days. And congratulations. Thank you all for participating in this event this evening. As you can see, there's a lot of love here, and that is something that is very special about Putnam Valley. And we all love and respect all of those who have given their work careers to this community. They've really made something happen for our students and their colleagues. Thank you.
And Dr. Wills, I would just like to say a few words, just a couple of things. First, to the three teachers, never could you get a better example of three teachers whose personality is shown in their classrooms? And we'll leave it at that. They all were themselves, their authenticity. I had the opportunity to work with all three of these teachers as a colleague one year, that was 15 years ago, if you can believe it, and saw their work firsthand, and want to thank them for that with the bottom of my heart. But I really wanted to say was to all of the TAs, secretaries, and lunch monitors, I speak for myself, but I know I speak with many of the parents, you were the mothers to my son when I wasn't in school, from when he was in seventh grade, and even some of you now that he's 25 and working in the school. TAs, lunch monitors, secretaries, they serve that function. The teachers are teaching, but you're the ones that they go to with the skinned knee, the "I forgot my homework," "Oh, my God, I can't find my phone," "Did you see where I put my laptop?" "Which jacket's mine?" All of those things a million times, and it's invaluable for those of us who are working mothers, those of us who have watched our children grow up, we know we couldn't have done it without all of you. So on behalf of every one of us, thank you very much. And people might be saying, "Isn't there another retiree in the district this year?" There is. The woman to my right will be retiring. No, we're not going to embarrass you tonight. We're going to embarrass her at the last board meeting of the year. But I did want to acknowledge while all of you are here, that we will also be losing to the life of retirement, Dr. Fran Wills, who started as an interim for one year, six years ago, and seemed to never be able to leave. And her, thank goodness, and to our benefit, I just, this is the first of many times that I want to publicly say thank you for your dedication, your vision, your energy, and the love you've given to all of us these six years.
I appreciate it every day.
Should we take a five-minute recess? Take a five-minute recess, so coaches could go home. I know many of you came for yet another celebration. You can stay where you are, but I would like to see if Christina Casey is in the room. Since so many of you of the middle school did come here to also see Christina receive her tenure, and since we do have a long agenda, and there are babies here, and some of you, I don't know why you would want to stay till the end of a board meeting. They're so incredibly riveting. But for those of you who don't, if you wouldn't mind, we'd like to rearrange the order and move to new business, one item of new business, number one. And Barbara, will you read it, please?
I will, if it'll come up. Never mind, I'm going to push for this. For some reason, it's very slow tonight.
Do you want to?
I don't have it, but it won't come.
Sorry, we're not always organized in Putnam Valley, but we always have our heart in the right place.
Okay, I got it. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that Christina Casey be granted tenure in the area of Special Education at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 30th, 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just today, I saw Christina Casey in action, and she has been very active since she came to our school district. Today, she was providing special professional development to our monitors at the middle school, and she and Dan Turner were working together. Christina has contributed so much to our school district since she has arrived four years ago. I've asked Natalie Doherty, Dr. Doherty now, by the way, congratulations, Dr. Doherty, to talk about Christina Casey, because Dr. Doherty has known her closely as she's grown throughout her tenure time here.
So, welcome. Welcome to Christina's family as well. And I couldn't be prouder to recognize Christina for her tenure tonight. She has contributed to this district so much, I can't even begin to say it, but her dedication to students, her work ethic, her ability to be reflective as a teacher, her ability to connect with parents, students, adults, really helping our students with, you know, all different types of students, really be self-reflective, self-monitoring, helping them to push them just a little further in such a way that they are able to tolerate it and accept it, and really want to please and work for Christina and work for her approval. And to me, that speaks volumes about a teacher and what they contribute. Her students really are dedicated to making sure that they do their best because of the work that they know is expected of them through her work. And I just can't say enough, she works countless hours, countless, for these students, and we should all be grateful for Christina. So, welcome.
Thank you. So I have a few words to say about Christina as well. Just have here, Christina Casey is one of the most mindful teachers we have in our district. She's a TCI Therapeutic Crisis Intervention Certified Trainer, who along with Mr. Turner trains staff members twice a year in de-escalation practices. As Dr. Wills also noticed today, she worked with our monitors. She runs a Take Five Club, where students discuss the benefits of mindfulness and practice simple techniques such as breathing, meditation, and basic yoga. She also helps to run the Art Club and Mural Club with Mrs. Nyda. Christina has sat in on our Yale Ruler Implementation Team Facilities Planning Committee and helped organize our International Potluck Dinner. As I stated, she's very mindful in all that she does. Christina is also the PVPTA Corresponding Secretary. She's had numerous board meetings throughout the school year and various PTA events. In the classroom, students are welcomed with a common routine with an environment of soft lighting, adjustable seating with flexible furniture, and structure. Christina meets the needs of all learners through various modes and station work. Her students receive the individualized attention they all deserve. In a collaborative setting, Christina takes over and co-teaches eighth-grade social studies classes with Mrs. Martino. She listens to students and provides the proper feedback when necessary. Christina is the type of teacher that is caring and thoughtful in her approach with students. She will continue to adapt to the ever-changing needs of our students and address the standards through her practice. It's a pleasure to work with an educator who is so involved in every facet of our middle school. Thank you, Christina.
Christina, you're still starting your career, so you have to walk up and shake all of our hands. We spared the rest of you. And while you have our attention, we're adding number five, because I understand the person who pertains to number five is also here, and want to spare them the long board meeting. So, Mr. Cohen, will you read number five for us?
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint John McManus to a four-year probationary term as a teacher of physics commencing on September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2023, in the tenure area of science at the high school. On Step 2 BA of the PVFT salary schedule, Mr. McManus's Physics Internship Certificate is anticipated in August 2019. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term, and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year probation.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And is Mr. McManus here? You need to walk up and shake our hands. It's exciting to say goodbye to people leaving their career at Putnam Valley and hello to people starting their career. Now, I'm not going to add any more, five-minute recess. Okay, welcome back to the Putnam Valley Board of Education meeting of April 23rd. We are going to begin with one of our first presentations, which is the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's vote, its trustee candidates, and the 2019-2020 budget. And it is the reason we are meeting on a Monday, because all, Tuesday, whatever day today is, on a Tuesday instead of a Thursday, because all of the constituent BOSIs have to meet and have this vote on today. So I'm going to turn it over to my two colleagues.
Okay, so there are two candidates for two open seats on the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's Board of Education. They have a separate board. Tina McKay from Putnam Valley and Frank Schnecker from Austining are the two candidates for two open seats.
And both are incumbents, aren't they?
Yes.
They're both incumbents.
Yes, they are both incumbents.
Okay. So the budget.
The budget. BOSI stands for Board of Cooperative Education. The key word is the C. They are supplying services which the individual districts cannot. There are 18 districts. And the part of the budget, there were two components to it. The first component is the administrative budget, paying for the staff, the teachers, and our contribution to that is about $245,000, and it's going up just under one percentage point. The rest of the budget depends on how many students we send. We have approximately 51 students, like in the tech program, but there might be other students that come up during the year. So their total budget, their administrative budget, their total administrative budget is about $84 million in total, and we're going to be paying about $245,000 of it towards that. But again, we will have other parts depending on how many students we have, depending on the services. If you're interested, go to Putnam Valley, PNWBOSI's.org, and their budget is up there, the whole document is up there if you want to see it.
And we will be having a resolution to approve the budget and the vote.
Just want to mention that we have 51 students this year, approximately, going to the BOSI's programs, particularly the CTE program, their career in technical. And in fact, this year, one of our students will be the salutatorian. Josh Uchutel will be the salutatorian at the BOSI's graduation, the technical graduation, which is very exciting, because remember, there are students there from 18 districts in our region, and one of our students is a salutatorian, so that's an honor for our school district and for Josh.
And we're very proud of Josh. Congratulations to Josh. That's great. Okay. So, and we will be acting on that in a resolution later in the meeting. Number two is the STAR program. Ms. Figueroa, you are up. And then I think you're just going to stand up there for a while, because you're number three presentation, too.
That's true.
So take everything you need, take everything you need now.
Yeah, just in case.
Save your trip.
Yeah, so tonight I brought some information about the STAR program. It is changing extensively for everybody in New York State. The best way to get the most information about it is to go on to the website. This is on our website, under the tax information button, that's on the front page of our website. And the only reason I'm telling you to go there is because there are so many changes. The program started in like 1995, and it continued for a number of years the way that it was, and most recently, it's had a lot of changes. So in 2016, homeowners who purchased new homes at that time were no longer offered a credit on their tax bill, but rather a check as a refund towards their STAR reduction. So this is not to be confused with the tax relief credit check that everybody gets in the fall. So I'm not going to say those words anymore, because that is something entirely different, although many of the words are similar when you talk about them. So there are two different things going on, the tax relief credit and the STAR reduction. So tonight, we're talking about STAR specifically. So those people who purchased 2016 and later are getting the STAR reimbursement through a check, not a credit on their tax bill. What's changing is, well, to begin with, and just to talk about who's STAR eligible, these are questions you need to ask yourself. Do you own a primary residence here? And these are factors that can determine what your primary residence is, because there's a lot more information, like I said, on the website, but these are the main ingredients, like where you live the greatest percent of time, where you vote, and where your vehicles are registered, because you do have to show proof that your primary residence is somewhere in order to be eligible. So then you want to ask yourself, are you eligible for the basic STAR or the enhanced STAR? And again, that's based on income and age. So for the basic STAR, you must earn under $500,000 to even be eligible for it, and that is going to be looked at on an annual basis. So previously, the basic STAR, everyone was eligible for that, no matter what your income was. And now they will be looking at it. So for 2019, they look at your 2017 tax return. So basic STAR gives you a reduction on your assessed value. So from now on, that reduction in your assessed value is $30,000. That just tells you that the remainder of your bill is what you're being taxed on, not the first $30,000. So if your income is $250,000 or less, you have a choice. You can register online to get your refund through a check, the form of a check, or if you already have a STAR savings on your bill, you can choose to continue getting that credit, but it will be the same amount as you got last year. So you won't see any increases in your STAR amount if you choose to remain with a credit on your tax bill. And again, you can only get that and continue to get that if your income is $250,000 or less. If you register online to get the check refund instead, you may receive up to 2% more each year, but you'll have to pay your bill in full to get it. So, in other words, you would register online, say from now through the end of the year, you would be eligible to get that check refund, and then that gets redetermined every single year. So if you pay your bill, then you get your refund the next year. If your reported income is over $250,000 but less than $500,000, you must switch and register to receive a check. I don't know how many people that affects in this district, but it will affect some people, and there are years where you may have more income than others, where you're, you know, you're going to fall into that category, and once you fall into that category and you become someone who has to receive a check, it's irrevocable. They won't change it back to the credit on your bill.
And Jill, when you opened, you said this applies to mostly people who bought in 2016. This is now everyone?
Right, this is everyone. So the people that were first affected by it were the people who purchased in 2016 and no longer received a credit on their tax bill, but rather got a check as a refund. Okay, so in order to receive that check, for those people that switch and register to receive a check, you have to register online to do this, that's the website, and you'll need certain information to fill in for the registration. So that's why it's important for you to go to the website, because that explains to you all of the things that you need, social security numbers, tax returns, you know, property descriptions. Before you go on to bother and register, you need to have all that information with you. So for the enhanced STAR, your 2017 income must be... So for the enhanced STAR, your 2017 income must be $86,300 or less. So even though you may be eligible age-wise, you may not be eligible income-wise. But if you are, the enhanced STAR gives you a reduction in your assessment on your bill of $68,700. So that just takes money off the top of your assessment and then taxes you on the remainder. So that's just, and that's not going to change. So again, this is where you get the information. And I'm recommending that people contact the school district or go to the website. The, the website is loaded with information and they, they give you different scenarios. If you purchased, you know, at one time or another, if you own property here, property somewhere else, how it affects you. And it, it talks about the income criteria the most. If you are a basic STAR candidate and you want to switch to receiving a check, there's just a lot of things to think about. You now have to come up with the full amount of the bill to pay in September and then wait for the refund to come. If you're escrowing your taxes, that means that your bank may be asking you to escrow more money every month so that they can pay it for you when it's due in September and then you get a refund check from New York State. So there's only, there's a lot of different things to consider when you're thinking about doing this. And the first step to doing the registration is to let the assessor know. Their, the state is asking every individual to let the assessor know that you are removing yourself from getting the credit on your bill. Then go online and register. And all this is explained on, on the website. I know there's a lot of, there's probably a lot of questions or there's going to be a lot of questions forthcoming as people start to think about what they want to do and what their choices are. So we're there to take those phone calls. It's going to be a lot more volume of phone calls. I'm sure the assessor's office is going to be experiencing the same thing. And, you know, the STAR people in, in New York State Department of Taxation, they're, they're very helpful. I called them myself. I had a few questions myself. If you register for this check before July 1st, for instance, does it affect your taxes this year or the following year? It will affect you for this year. You can get the check this year instead. If you do it after July 1st, which is called the taxable status date, they might send you a letter of, of declination and not be able to do it before the tax cycle. So then you'll be, you'll have to pay the whole thing and then wait for a refund to come. So there's a lot of different things you need to know. And the only way to find out is to go on to the website, call us up and ask as many questions as you can to try and get your answers.
Jill, for people that aren't listening here?
Yeah, there's a lot not listening.
Like, I, how are they going to get this information? I haven't heard it talked about on the news?
Yep, so we just got updated on all of the, you know, details this week. The assessors were brought up to speed this week. They've had, you do have a lot of information on the New York State website. We're, we're putting out what we can to people. We're going to send messages out. We're going to put in something with your tax bill that is going to be after July 1st. It isn't absolutely necessary and I can't see that for the most part, people will want to register to get the check because they will have to come up with the full amount of the tax to pay first and then wait for a refund. I, I would think that most people would choose not to go that route, especially the first year. They want to explore what their options are. And like I said, once you do that, once you change over to the check, you can't go back. It's irrevocable. So that may be something you want to take into consideration and wait a little bit before you make that decision and see how it's going to affect you economically in your own household. The town assessor's office is going to be having some nights where they give information on this. They're going to have it at board meetings. It'll be streaming on their channel. And this board meeting streams on that channel as well. So people will be hopefully talking about it and contacting us to try and get as much, you know, information as they can to help them.
One more quick question. You mentioned, Jill, that everybody who's going to switch to the check needs to contact the assessor's office. But if you're continuing to get it as a credit on your taxes, you do not?
Does anybody have any questions right now?
Not right now.
Right. Okay.
While you're there.
So that's a lot of information. Okay, so the next presentation is going to be on the budget and I believe it's right here. Okay, so I'm going to go over the 2019-20 budget. From the last time we did this, there hasn't been any change to the presentation. But maybe perhaps you have some questions that we didn't go over last time. So we have our student enrollment information. Right now, we have about 14 more students than we had listed on here for next year. So our count is at about 1621. We won't have any final information on those expected enrollment figures until the end of the summer, before the first day of school. So those changes, though, seem to be spread throughout the grade levels. There's nothing significant that we would need to change based on the information that we have. So for program and staff for 2019-20, we're looking at continuing our current programs. We're adding a ninth grade level of Mandarin at the high school. Right now, it only exists at our middle school. And we'll be offering, this is a distance learning program that's offered through BOCES. We have some staff changes. And if you've been watching the board meeting tonight, you saw that we have three teachers retiring and 13 support staff, a number of experienced staff members who will be missed, but for the most part, we're replacing. So for reductions in, in staff, we have about 3.4 teachers and that's not specifically towards the retirements, but more or less spread throughout after changing with enrollments and, and, you know, schedule changes and whatnot. The three bus drivers that are retiring, we plan to replace them. And we are looking to hire bus drivers on our own. It seems to be the, the most economical way to go. If not, we will look to the contractor to do that and we're working on that now. So that's a plug for hiring bus drivers. We're looking for bus drivers in the district. Not just large bus, a big bus driver, you know, for the 66 passenger, but for the small buses, they take longer runs. We're looking for people who are interested in maybe doing sport runs in the afternoon, so part-time and full-time. We are looking at, in the budget right now, one groundskeeper custodian at the middle school, high school campus. And the one additional clinician, I don't know if it's been decided, guidance counselor or school counselor, but still looking at that position that will service the elementary school and middle school campus. For the revenue information in the budget, we're made some assumptions, made some assumptions. We have greater interest earnings coming our way. So that's helping us out with our, our revenue. We also have an added district tuition right now that is also contributing to our revenues. Our overall state aid increase, we're only seeing about $219,000. A very small portion of the revenue coming from state aid and it's, it's a concern going forward. Our foundation aid has been reduced drastically over the last five to seven years and has not been replaced. And I think all districts across the state are suffering from that. You may be hearing that in the news. We have a reduced reliance on our use of our fund balance this year. We're using about $1 million less than we did last year in order to balance our budget. So that's, that's a good thing. And, you know, I think the fact that we're trying to be more conservative with that is going to help us down the road. Our budgeted revenue, we have by source here. We have our state and federal sources. We're, we're looking at about $11 million coming from New York State. Local non-tax revenues, we're seeing an increase there, mostly due, like I said, to the interest income and the student, the added district student that we're going to have coming in. Our real property tax revenue, the real property tax revenue is based on the tax cap calculation. And right now, our tax cap calculation has put us at an allowable increase of about 2.08, but we've been able to build the budget around a 1.99% increase. So our tax revenue is at $37.4 million. We have our appropriated fund balance and general fund reserve use, which I explained, we're using, trying to use less of this year. You know, we need to save that money. We're not getting our state aid like we have been and we can't rely on that apparently going forward. So we need to be as conservative as possible. We have 1.5 million from our appropriated fund balance and we have appropriated debt reserve, which helps pay us for, helps us pay our debt at $1 million. So overall, a 0.75% increase, under 1% increase on the entire budget, a $51 million budget of $385,000. On the expenditure side of the budget, what changes will we see? We'll see, we, we're going to be having new labor contracts for teachers and those negotiations are underway right now. We have our support staff contracts, our vendor contracts for purchasing, our BOCES programs that we just talked about, adopting the BOCES budget. That's all included in there. Students that go through to BOCES and equipment contracts that we have with them, laptop computers, our, also our copiers, we get through them. So those are all important items that are in our budget, but we, we pay for them through BOCES. We're seeing about a 3.5% increase in health premiums, which equates to about a $205,000 increase to our benefits line. We have our new ninth grade level of Mandarin. We're adding to the high school and we have some of our staff replacements and, that we spoke about in the previous slide, who those, where those were going to be. Some of the savings we're seeing in the budget is with our New York State Teachers' Employer Pension Contribution. That is down about 1.3%, which equates to about $135,000. And we're, we have staff and teacher retirements that have given our budget back $450,000 in net. So overall, our general support category is up very little at 0.56, $4.5 million. Our instruction category is actually down minus, minus 0.21. The category that you see is increased is our debt service. And that's mainly at a 15.65. It's mainly because our debt for our laptops and our, some of our technology has been recategorized from instruction into our debt service because we've been able to categorize it and use it as part of our tax cap calculation. But it's just skewing the, the percent increase and decrease in the budget.
Jill, would that be the case in future years as well?
Right, that will remain in that category as debt service. You won't see that change next year. And overall, the budget, again, $51 million budget, a very small increase of 0.75%, under 1% of $385,000. These are the different line items in the budget, broken down further than what we just spoke about. I don't know if there's a specific, I'll, I'll just point out the specific ones that have changed more dramatically. Again, the debt service principal and interest, that one you see up. The general education school programs, you see that, that change decrease, $327,000. That's mostly due to the retirements on the staff that we talked about. And the mandated benefits, employee mandated benefits, again, the net change between the health insurance and the pension, we are seeing a decrease overall in benefits of $105,000. The special apportionment programs, we're expecting, you know, a few more special ed students, special need students. So that, that category has risen a little bit. So overall, the budget, 0.75, a change of $385,000. So as far as accountability for fiscal and programmatic changes, these are some points that I want to make about the budgets that we've had over the past five or six years, that taxes have remained below the allowable tax cap since its inception in 2012, and that's over seven years. And over the past five years, the tax levy change average is under 1% at 0.67. We've been able to maintain our quality programs with a five-year average budget-to-budget change of just 1.43%. And our outcomes for students are still showing to be positive. We've been able to preserve and protect all student programs. We've had increased learning opportunities and have enhanced the curriculum, students K through 12 through those years. And again, we have a tax cap compliant budget, which has provided homeowners with the annual tax relief credit as well as the STAR program. Neither one of those programs would make our homeowners eligible for them unless our budget was tax cap compliant. This is just a look at the proposed expenditures and the breakdown visually of the different portions of the budget, instruction being the largest and employee benefits being the second largest. And again, we have to present the budget in, by state mandate, as a three-part component budget, which represents our instructional portion of the budget at 77%, administration at 11, and capital at 12%. So I wanted to talk about the property tax capital. I think every year, the more we talk about it, the more people understand about it. It's not an, you know, for us, and, and we go over it every year. It, it's something we do, it's redundant, but it's complicated in, in many ways. So although the law is often referred to as a 2% tax cap, it doesn't restrict any proposed tax levy to increase only 2%. It's just part, the 2% is just part of the formula that is an eight-step formula. And school districts must use that formula in order to calculate the maximum allowable tax levy. So that was the 2.08 that I talked about earlier and our tax levy is at 1.99. The Putnam Valley School District is proposing a tax levy under that maximum amount. This is not going forward. Excuse me. Technical difficulties. We were moving along smoothly. Let's, let's, I think it's frozen.
So close, Jill, so close.
So close. Almost there. My gosh. It doesn't like something in there.
Heart, and what's the other thing?
Money.
Oh, money. Love the duck.
There. Just go to the next one. That's the one I wouldn't change. Okay, back on track. Okay.
Nicely done.
Oh.
You're a visitor.
Okay, so, all right. So this is a look at our, our budget overall. So we have our proposed budget at $51.6 million with a point, doesn't like this, 0.75% increase. Overall, $385,000. Our proposed tax levy, $37.4 million. A 1.99% increase or $732,000. And it's, again, lower than the allowable limit when we do the tax cap calculation. And I think we're frozen again. Okay, help. I should have watched what you did. I'm sorry. So, okay.
Maybe don't put it in presentation or just show it.
I guess. It's kind of small.
You're almost there.
But you, they'll see it larger. Okay, so.
Sometimes technology is good, and sometimes technology is bad.
Alright, you know what, I'm gonna skip to this.
Can I just do it from there?
Okay, yeah. Okay, so the, okay, I'm just talking about, here I wanted to go over the fact that the tax cap compliant budget allows everyone to get the refund annually on their school taxes, either in the form of a tax credit or a refund check, and it usually arrives sometime in the fall. In some cases, depending on your income, your tax relief credit might offset some of the increase in, in the budget. Taxes are based on individual assessed home values, keep that in mind, everybody's home is valued at a different amount, and if you do have questions about your assessment, the people to contact is the assessor's office in the town. And again, have people go on to the website, look up the store information, everybody's in an individual situation, not everyone is affected the same way by the basic and the enhanced STAR changes that we are in store for this year. This was just, I was gonna talk a little bit about the tax relief credit, the refund does not come from the school district, it is not something that you should be calling the school district about, it comes through the New York State Department of Taxation, and because the district is tax cap compliant, that's our, that's our part that we play in it, it has nothing to do, we have nothing to do with making the refund. And then, there is a lot of information on this page as well, as far as who gets it, how much they get, the percentage of that refund, and what it's based on. I also want to go over what our voter turnout trends have been, and they're decreasing for all districts across the area, across the state, mostly, we feel that that's happening because of the, some of the complacency that's been put on people due to tax cap being part of the, the budget process now. People are under the, or residents are under the impression that when, they know we can't go above the 2% unless we go for a supermajority vote, that everything's fine, and that they don't need to come out and vote, and that's just not the case. They need to come out and vote, they need to still, you know, decide, make a decision about the budget overall, and this just gives you an idea of how flat those turnouts are becoming across the area. So what, I also need to talk about what a contingent budget is. I think it's important that people know if the, if the budget were not to get approved during the vote, that it would lose its ability to ma, you know, to have the district maintain programs and services that are currently in place. A contingent budget could mean making cuts of like $732,000, which is the difference between last year's tax levy and this year's tax levy, because once the budget goes contingent, that's something that we have to do, is cut the tax levy back to what it was, which would mean losing programs, or people, or any supplies, athletic programs, it would diminish what we're able to do with the current budget that we have. And so as far as voting information goes, our vote is on May 21st at the elementary school, it is the third Tuesday in May, it runs from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and if you need to obtain an absentee ballot because you can't attend the vote, they are available right up until the week before the vote, either by mail, and they need to be requested, or you can come in person to the business district office and obtain one, and they can be returned the same day of the vote by 5 o'clock. There are some voter registration nights coming up, you can check our website, www.pvcsd.org. Our newsletter is on the website, we have an electronic version that is giving budget information, and it's also going out shortly. It has a line-by-line, we have a line-by-line proposed budget available at the district office or online as well, and obviously, email, or call, or ask questions, you can call me anytime, my phone number is there, and my email address is jfigarola@pvcsd.org. And I'm not gonna run the video. You can watch the video online, it's a nice video that explains how budget process works in New York State, and it's very informative.
I'm not gonna push our technological luck.
Does anybody have any questions? I don't wanna press my luck.
Now Jill, we have another, the final hearing of the budget is May 7th, which is two weeks before the actual vote. Nothing will change between then and now as far as information in the budget, the budget has been adopted, that's what's going to be on the ballot, so if you're seeing this, it's not gonna be any different than the final hearing.
Right, the budget numbers that are in this presentation are, have been adopted by the board, this is what's going to be presented in the budget vote, and again, questions or comments about anything in the budget, I can help answer those questions anytime. Okay?
Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, Maureen, are you setting us up for the second
Yes.
reading of the policy 157/19, homebound instruction.
Well, I'm trying here. Okay. It's the same policy, there's no changes since the last meeting.
We're really just changing the hours, we're being more specific in the amount of hours when a student is placed on homebound instruction, how many hours they can receive in, you know, for, for services when they're on, you know, at home receiving homebound instruction.
Based on work criteria, why the change?
So, it just wasn't specific, it wasn't prescriptive enough, so really, you wanna have at least like a benchmark. This policy allows us that if a student needs more than, for example, a high school student would receive up to 10 hours a week for instruction if they're placed on homebound, this policy specifically says, at minimum, you're going to get 10 hours, but gives us flexibility that if we think a student needs more than that because of a specific reason, that we can offer them more services, if they need it. That's really the only change.
Just more quantifies.
Exactly.
If you, if you, just look at the first sentence, it becomes very clear. Secondary students receive instruction for at least, the red is the new part, at least 10 hours per week provided. Before, it used to say instruction for two hours per day, so now it's just saying at least, it's taking two times five, and just saying that's the minimum, and if you read the rest of it, it's pretty much the same way all the way down.
I want just practical question, secondary usually refers to seventh grade, so is it, is it split in the middle school?
Yes, 7-12, that's where the split is. And any 1-6, or K-6, usually gets an hour a day, but again, this policy allows us some flexibility, that if a student needs more, we can offer them a little bit more services if they, if their needs require that.
Any other questions? Alright. I'm just gonna leave my whole agenda. Sorry, I just closed my whole agenda, let's see where we are.
It's, uh, Dr. Left.
Did the PTA person go away?
They're right here.
She's hiding in the back.
Oh, I didn't know you were hiding, Ms. Christina Casey. And congratulations again.
Thank you. I was gonna say, you should've known I was gonna stay.
I figured.
My name is Christina Casey, corresponding secretary for the Putnam Valley PTA. The PTA is sponsoring a spelling bee for the third and fourth graders, April 25th is the semifinals, and May 13th is the finals. The following students have made it to the semifinals. Nicholas Tran, Madeline Pykuch, Nina Lamott, Vienna Toteta, Dylan Figaroa, Kate Mulqueen, Lily Cottrell, Summer Sworka, Nicholas Rondazzo, Cassidy Lewis, Kylie Bo, and Lorena Lucky. Good luck to all. Our elementary school yearbook is for sale, you can order online at yearbookordercenter.com, and our order number is 1-8-0-0-4. If you order your book by May 5th, they are only $25 each, after May 5th, they will be $30 each. We have a couple of arts and ed events coming up. On May 9th, we'll have a Revolutionary War encampment for the fourth graders, on May 10th, Medieval Manners and Manners for the sixth grade, and on May 17th, the sixth grade is going to Medieval Times Dinner and Tournament in New Jersey. We'll be hosting a staff appreciation luncheon for both our elementary and middle school staff on Tuesday, May 7th. Our theme is "Our Staff Really Shines." We are asking our PV families for food or monetary donations for the luncheon. A Google form will be sent out for, for those who wish to contribute. We will also send out a form for students to fill out about their favorite teachers and staff, to be hung around the faculty rooms on the day of the event. We'll have our BOGO Book Fair at the elementary school from Monday, May 6th to Friday, May 10th. The Book Fair will also be open during the elementary school open house nights from 6:30 to 7:30 on Monday and Wednesday of that week. Those interested in volunteering for the event, or to chair this committee next year, should email Michelle@shellriley@hotmail.com. And then we'll have our BOGO Book Fair at the middle school from Monday, May 13th through Wednesday, May 15th during the student lunch periods. The Book Fair will also be open prior to the band concerts on the 14th and 15th of that, those evenings. Volunteers need to help set up the Book Fair on Monday, May 13th from 9:30 to 10:12 AM. To volunteer, please email Stacy@stacypt23@gmail.com. And we're gonna have our PTA and Hudson Valley Renegades game fundraiser on Sunday, June 23rd at 4:35 PM, will be honoring Mr. Carlin at this game. Tickets are $12 each and include a hat. To purchase tickets, go to groupmaddox/events/eventsputnamvalley5, and a flyer is going out with this information as well. A portion of each ticket sale goes back to benefit the PTA. And we have our Three For Me program running at the elementary school on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 9:15 to 11:00 AM, we can also attend at other times. Three For Me encourages members to volunteer three hours at their time over the course of the year to support our elementary school teachers with tasks such as copying, assembling projects. Coffee and snacks are provided. To volunteer for anything mentioned tonight or upcoming events, please sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org, or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org, and our Facebook page for more information. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Dr. Left, our curriculum report?
So, mine's gonna be really quick, since our last board meeting, we've mostly had a spring break, and I know, I don't wanna steal Dr. Will's thunder, she has a couple of things she's gonna speak about, so I just wanted to quickly, again, recognize all of the retirees, many of which, without embarrassing them individually, are faces and people I knew as a student here, and in some cases, even as a teacher here, or someone I had as a teacher. And it'll never be forgotten that I was the cause of the one on the snowtie record, because I was the one who did not close school that day, so Mr. Carlin has yet to forgive me, so, I wouldn't acknowledge it.
We'll have our cross to bear. And that's it. Dr. Will, superintendent's report.
Yeah, a couple of things I did mention about the salutatorian at the BOSI's Tech would be Josh Uchutel, the Into the Woods Musical will be held this weekend at the, you know, the middle school musical. National Honor Society induction takes place this Wednesday, and again, we've been recognized as an IB World School, most recently in the regional local newspaper, the Examiner, and a lot of people are understanding that we're entering into a very exciting time for our students.
No, no, Dr. Will, isn't it Thursday?
I'm sorry.
The Honor Society?
The Honor Society is Thursday.
Right.
Right, I keep thinking we're in a different day, I don't know why. Thank you for pointing that out. I also wanted to support our sheriff, Robert Langley Jr., in supporting a declaration of the month of April as Teen Driver Safety Awareness Month in Putnam County. We all know that this is the time of year we worry a great deal about our students and their driving and safety, so I hope that we can, that you won't mind me reading the proclamation, and demonstrating our support as a district for the safety of all of our students on the roads this spring. April 9th, 2019 is proclaimed Teen Driver Safety Awareness Month, whereas statistics and experience demonstrate that the greatest danger to our youth in Putnam County and throughout our country are the dangers posed from traffic crashes. And whereas high school, uh, hot, sorry, highway crash statistics inform us that although teen drivers make up only 7% of the driving population, they comprise 18% of the injury-related automobile crashes. It's a very important statistic that we keep in mind. And whereas the leading cause of accidental deaths to our youthful population throughout the United States are automobile accidents, and whereas analysis shows us that the reasons for teen overrepresentation and injury-related automobile crashes include driver inexperience, excessive speed, unnecessary risk-taking, inattentive driving, and the use of alcohol and drugs. And whereas in Putnam County, we have too often experienced a tragedy with the death of a teen driver at the wheel, many of these deaths have occurred during the spring and summer months, with a higher incident rate, incidence rate during the period leading up to prom season. And whereas all accidents are preventable, and crash rates can be lowered through the use of education and awareness programs, through the use of our school systems, law enforcement programs, youth services organizations such as Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Junior R2C programs, and the Civil Air Patrol, just to name a few. And whereas these programs work best when there is a period set aside for local government at every level, our school districts, churches, synagogues, and youth service organizations coming together to provide these educational programs, now be it resolved that the Putnam County Executive and Putnam County Legislature do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Teen Driver Safety Awareness Month in Putnam County. We encourage all levels of government, our school districts, law enforcement, our churches and synagogues, our youth service organizations, and all the citizens of Putnam County to support programs that promote teen driver safety awareness in Putnam County, thereby protecting one of our most precious resources, our children and grandchildren. Signed by Mary Ellen Odell and Joseph Castellario, Chairman, Putnam County Legislature.
Is that it? Yes. Okay. Alright, I'd like to, before I open it up to new business, comments on any of the current agenda items, I do want to read or make a statement, and once again, thank everybody here for coming with their passion. Although the board will be considering the approval of a teacher's resignation during the consent agenda, this action does not eliminate the opportunity for the teacher to continue as a coach for the district. We have several coaching positions filled from outside our professional staff. Our students have communicated clearly that the teacher has built strong relationships with student athletes, and the board respects the student, the student's support for that relationship. This resignation that's being considered refers to the teaching position, not the coaching role. Just wanted to make that clear before we move into public comments. And now I'd like to open it up to public comments.
So, last week, of course, we came and talked about Mr. Posh and how he's affected as a coach, and I thank you for mentioning that, that position wouldn't be compromised by his tenure situation. We still came to talk more about his teaching career this time, and we've actually, we've gathered some, some student comments from the middle school that I think is going to
So, I would like to, first of all, thank two students who I just conducted an interview with, who actually attended the middle school, Kate Nielsen and Zachary Fitzmars, who both spoke to me and signed their names on this little piece of paper right here, saying that this is how they feel that Mr. Posh teaches in the classroom, and the effect that he has on their classroom. Starting with his classroom behavior, Posh creates a work environment for the students that was designed by him for them. He asks students' opinions on distractions of students, appealing layouts, fun rewards, AKA special chairs and special environments, such as sitting on the window if they are behaving well, and he creates this positive reinforcement in the classroom that helps students feel welcome and loved. They say that the classroom feels like a family to them, and that without Posh being there, that most classes probably wouldn't have been as enjoyable. there, that most classes probably wouldn't have been as enjoyable, as they would have no class to look forward to throughout the day. They both have him as a skills teacher and as a history teacher, so they have him in multiple subjects, and he actually is willing to help them with work outside of his own class, and he also helps them with work from inside his class. When students miss work, or they do not understand a lesson, one-on-one help is given to the students who have trouble by going to them during recess or their skills periods and directly going to sit with them and give up his break time to help them. He will never sacrifice their time out of their day to go help them. He will only sacrifice his own, and he is willing to make that sacrifice for the care that he puts into those students. He helps turn their grades around if they start falling. He helps build character with all these students that are living in the middle school, the environment that you've created for the students. If he's helping benefit that environment, I think it's wrong, and I think many people would agree, to release someone from that environment just because of reasons that do not seem strong enough to justify what he does for these students. He does a lot, and, and I quote, "And if the class, on such rare occasions, does not understand a topic, Posh will go back and reiterate what he was teaching over and over again. And he will do it and not get upset, and not get impatient. He will wait for the students to understand the topic." He helps kids learn. He does not feed them information. He does not say, "This is what you need to do, go do it." He helps them actually learn and understand and recall information. And even when we were out there, I asked them, "How much do you remember from the beginning of the year?" And he, they said plenty. And they were citing lessons, and they were citing projects they did, and all of this great stuff that they did at the beginning of the year. And I can remember some of it, although not well, but they seemed to remember it pretty well. And I think that speaks a lot more about his teaching than anything else, that students go into a classroom and they're happy to learn, and they're welcomed into the environment. And so I asked them about how he handles disruptions in the class, because I think that's a very big topic to address. And they said that not only is he willing to work constructively with students by allowing them to miss out on pieces of information and then teach them one-on-one, but he also teaches them a lesson in the process. Because they come up and they say, "I didn't understand what you just said. Could you repeat it?" And he will explain it to them, even though sometimes they might not deserve it, because they skipped out on his lesson, on his time. But what he does do is he explains to them why. He tells them, "If you weren't talking, maybe you would have understood this lesson. If you weren't going around goofing off, you would have understood this lesson." And he will help them figure out ways in the classroom to behave better. And students take that and they apply it to other classes as well. They were even pointing out a specific student, who I can't name, but they were, they were telling me about how he behaves and how disruptive he really is. And they say that in Posh's class, Posh has managed to actually make him not disruptive in the class, which for how much in other classes they say that he bothers them, for them to not be disrupted in their learning environment, also, which happens to be one of their favorites, I think it says a lot about how much he does change his classroom, and how much he makes the classroom good for the students. I think that with how much he helps kids' education, and how much that he is really able to boost their averages, and if he sees they're falling, he goes and helps and helps and helps. And he gives that one-on-one tutoring, which I wish some high school teachers did, let alone middle school. I remember some subjects I struggled with, and that's when you need to learn stuff. Because that's the information you need to take away into high school. That's the information you need to know. And if he's teaching it to you, he's helping you. And if he gives fun lessons that students want to go to, and if he gives great information that people remember, then why should he be fired? Why should he not be asked to come back next year? I think that his teaching is some of the best this district has seen. And they helped me see that even more. I've spoken to students in Homework Club, I've spoken to younger siblings of my friends, and they all say the same thing. But now I have personal accounts of exactly what he does that makes it so great. And I think that's more important than anything else. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Yeah, so just to, to sum it up, well, I think it was fitting that this board meeting started with congratulating all these amazing teachers that have changed our community in so many ways. And I think we just want to honor one more teacher that has really helped all of us and hundreds of middle schoolers. You know, we just, we want it to be heard that we're really disappointed that this is happening, and that this man that has helped so many of us and been such a great teacher is being, is being let go. We also have some more letters from the middle school that I think you already understand the point from last time that we'll give to you. And yeah, we just wanted to say that Mr. Posh means a lot to all of Putnam Valley. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Thank you. And once again, I have to comment on the eloquence of both of you. One of you looks a little more nervous than the other, public speaking, but you both did a tremendous job in getting your passion across, and thank everybody who came this evening. Are there any other comments on any of the agenda items? Okay. So we're going to move into new business, but we've already done number one and number five, Mr. Farrar, I know you got stuck in traffic. So we're, I'm going to ask you to start us with number two.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Alexandra Mazza to an eight-week long-term substitute position as a grade-five teacher at the middle school effective April 23rd, 2019 through June 21st, 2019, or sooner, at the discretion of the Board of Education, at the substitute salary rate of $125 per day. His Mazza holds ELA 7 through 12, initial certification 5 through 6, ELA extension pending.
Second. Questions or comments? Some of you on the board may remember Ms. Mazza as one of our very own student board representatives when she was here in school. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the second reading to policy 4327, homebound instruction, as per document number 164/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number
Just, that means that it is now adopted. This is now one of our policies.
Thank you. Number four.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to approve the 2019-20 Board of Education meeting dates, as per document 165/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving, we did number five. Moving on to the consent agenda. Number one.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda items 2 through 12 as presented to the board of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're voting for the two candidates for the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's Board of Education. We're approving the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's budget of $9,450,232. We're accepting the resignation of one of our staff members. We're approving CSE, CPSE placements. We're approving the establishment of the retirement contribution reserve pursuant to the municipal laws, as Jill talked about. We're approving a health and welfare contract with White Plains Central School District for four of our students who attend private schools in White Plains. We're approving a contract for pupil personnel services who are going to get consulting help from WIHD Assistant Technology Team, and they're going to be working on various areas. We're approving an independent educational evaluation for one of our students who has special needs. We're approving special education programs at the, at the following schools, Alcott, Clearwater, Caraffan, Westchester Community Opportunities Program, and Westchester Exceptional Children's. We're mending an additional assignment for one of our staff members to provide consulting teaching services for two disability students. We're authorizing the superintendent of schools to enter into an agreement with Dr. Cassie Yakley to provide professional development opportunities for staff on the impact of trauma on youth. And that, Dr. Yakley will be meeting with staff on May 27th throughout the day, and will be holding sessions for the whole schools.
Okay, any additional comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number, oh, that's it. Okay. H, moving on, public comment on any topic. Okay, if there's no additional public comment, is there anything from the board?
I just wanted to thank the board again for listening to us and just kind of say my thoughts, that I'm, I'm really disappointed that a teacher that's been so influential in the middle school can be let go like this, and that I think from a moral standpoint, it's just really upsetting that a man, a good man, that came to this school with, with every intent of making it its home and, and, and teaching its students can just be turned away. A man, a man that had no doubt in his mind that he would be able to make a place for himself here and would be accepted. And I just think it's really, I'm really disappointed that, that this was allowed to happen, and that something in our system let this happen. And without, thank you.
And Sam, I just, I just want to say, obviously confidentiality laws of, prohibits us, prevents us from talking about resignations or any employee action. But the passion, both in your presence and in your words, is such a gift to Mr. Posh and to that individual as he resigns. And he's made an impact, and that's never, ever going to change. So I want to thank you again. It's really an honor serving this district, because these are the people that we're creating. So thank you very much. If there's no other public contribution, I'd like a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continued, happy spring, everyone.